Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the annual meeting of Spennymore Town Council. Before I hear the formal business of the meeting, I would like to say a few words before I present the proceeds of my charity table to the representatives of my nominee for chair. Last year, I was given the great honour of becoming Mayor of Spennymore. During my mayoral term, I had made many new friends in the chain gang, taken part in many events, given flowers and gifts to many surprised people usually get out of people at significant times in their lives, and raised some money for my dedicated charities. I also laid my mark on the town by the more skate park and Jubilee Park. I would like to thank everyone who supported me my efforts, in all, and particularly also the support of my charities. Sadly, over the last year, I've lost a number of friends. But recently, and most sadly, my lover, my best friend, my partner, and my mayoress, Florence Grognessy. Florence, while she was able, an elegant, intelligent, engaging, and committed ambassador for me and our town, she's sorely missed. I'd like to thank Pat Lorden for her assistance during my year. I invite her forward to the bench. I'd also like to thank my sister-in-law, Debbie Taylor, who for the last few months has kept in good shape for herself. This is to the utmost job for me and my family. Debbie? Now I'd like to invite representatives of my charities to come forward and receive their chance. Have a nice visit, sir.
Thanks, one Debbie.
Somewhere, I have a special honour in council, as you know. I would expect to say a very, uh, must say thank you for the donation to the welfare service. I'd like to introduce you to Governor Glenda Crye, who makes a few of us on behalf of the Gergers.
Thank you, Inspector Carmichael, Members of the May. On behalf of the Gergers, I would like to say thank you, Mary. Mr. Martin, Susan, thank you. All the people of this town, those who help collect this money. Obviously, definitely, you help me make us keep it friend, the Gergers, and the whole town. One second. Thank you so much for your help and your assistance. Thank you.
I'm standing down now at the most unusual time in the council's history, in which my reverend comrades, members of Spennymore, and the people of Spennymore are the best of luck in the coming years. And I'm going to ask councillor Gelda to speak before I move to the first item on the agenda.
Mr. Retired Mayor, your mayoral term of office has been unusual in that it concluded the long-form elections. And so can I take this opportunity on behalf of the outgoing council, thank you for all of your efforts during the past year. And I first congratulate you on the tremendous amount you've raised to be chosen charities, the Gerd Welfare Trust and the NSACAC. Your work throughout the year has not only assisted these two great organisations in obtaining much needed funding, but it has also increased awareness of both the difficulties and recognition that the Gerders continually face, and also to the increased risk for our children and young people in the technological age. As you made amends with the fact I will address, this is the most unusual time in the council's history. The council has had a Labour majority since the 1987s. However, the paper has sought fit on this occasion to run to different majority party to serve this council. With such a change, it is inevitable that we circle by some members of the authority, including some longstanding stalwarts of Spennymore Town Council who have served continuously since the 1980s, which I would like to briefly mention. I would first like to pay tribute to John Parkinson, who is the longest-serving Alcorn owner of the council. Having sat in this authority since 1984, John faithfully served the community of Middlesbrough for 33 years, and his wealthy next day will be in this this chair. In the Tullow ward, we say farewell to Jim Graham, who has later been town mayor, who runs off his term of office of 30 years, and John Caine, a member of the British Empire, affectionately known during his civic year as the mayor of Lefair. Both have served their communities with great energy over many, many years, and should be sincerely thanked for their time and efforts. And in the North Spennymore Trust range towards the pathways of John Ma, another longstanding councillor, again having served in both the office of town mayor and leader of the council at different times during his term. I thanks also for the other Labour councillors who either stepped down or lost their seats in recent weeks, but under the support of these people over the previous years, the successes of the previous council may not have been realized. And Mr. May, those successes over the years have been many. We've increased the usage of the town hall, including the overseeing introduction of the Bob Abbey Art Gallery and Durham Mining Museum. We've granted the freedom of the town to the D. Rifles Company. We've expanded our range of community events to include the Hoddle Culture Show and the free entry party on the park. And we have continued committing to award-winning Jubilee Park and our town cemetery sites to a great standard year on year. Whilst doing all of this, we retained a council tax reset of 0% increase over the vast majority of recent years. The results of these elections were decisive, but Spennymore remains a strong opposition on the town council going forward. So together with my fellow Labour councillors, who will continue to support and help this council, but will also ensure that the decisions taken by the new majority group are challenged where we feel they're not the best for the people of Spennymore. We know from the polls that at least over a quarter of voters supported the Labour candidates, and so we will ensure that these people continue to be well represented within this chamber. Mr. May, you've had an exciting year, having presided over the opening of the new Jubilee Skate Park, breaking Olympic medal Stacey Tinker on her open top push tour, qualified by the council, and even taking part in the youth council's colour event alongside myself, councillor Bosberg. You've conducted your time in office with a masterful balance of civic professionalism and double worth of contributions to the value of community. Everly assisted by a deputy mayor, Pat Lorden, his town has had a great benefit to excellent ambassadors, and I wish you a wonderful day, as we move into the next chapter of Spennymore Town Council. It would be reassigned me not to also pay tribute to your late cousin Florence, who I was personally very fond of. Florence was a great supporter here throughout your time on the council. And although reluctantly at first, she took the role of mayoress under her wing and great personality, being well respected and liked throughout the civic community. She is a mistress, and I'm sure she's looking down upon us today, bearing with pride in your achievements. Firstly, I thank you on first of all, on all of the support and assistance you provided major in this past civic year, which is my final year of the Labour of the council. I did enjoy my term of office, which at times is certainly not been easy, but I'm pleased that I was able to contribute positively to this authority over the last three years as leader. I will always be thankful for the great friendships I made, which if not to come about, then we'd not have passed on this council. Derek, thank you very much, and I wish you all the best for the future. Thank you, the council chairman.
Chair, on behalf of Member Irredependents, I'd like you to thank you for the work that you've done in your mayoral year, and also to wish you well for the future. With regard to outgoing members of the council, some of whom have been longstanding, I also wish them well in the future, and hope that our town club will do the appropriate letter thanking them on our behalf. We look forward to having an effective opposition in the council chamber, as we were when we were opposition. We did support most of the events that were held in the mayoral year and also prior to that, but we also look forward now to moving on and looking forward to introducing new initiatives, which hopefully, as a council, we will have support. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Well, enough to see with the business items on the agenda. I do want the election of town mayor. Can I now pass for nominations to the position of town clerk for the ensuing year?
Town Mayor, distinguished guests, fellow councillors, officers, and members of the public. Thank you for attending this evening to see the inauguration of our new town mayor, an important event in the calendar year at our town council. I would like to nominate councillor Ian Makeham for the position of town mayor for the ensuing year. Ian has not been a councillor prior to this date, but has been active in our community as a member of the Prince's Trust, helping young people to develop and succeed, and with his personal skills and values, has been a good mentor for them. Ian is also a school governor at West Conforth Primary School. He has been a regular attendee and contributor at community meetings, using his wealth of management skills and experience. Learned through a long career in private industry, at director and in senior management positions for international organisations. His skills particularly in information technology and accountancy, and in team building, can be used to harness and strengthen the priorities, action plans, and targets that we've set as a group for moving forward as a town council. Our team are on a journey to bring about change that will make life better for all people at our town and parishes, young and old, ill, infirm, and vulnerable. And I consider that Ian, in a mayoral capacity and as a community ambassador, will be the right person to promote the interests of our town and community and his chosen charities. Our town council is also at an important stage in its development, with our plans for transition and transformation of services. Ian has shown a strong commitment to teamwork, and will be the right person to work with our ongoing team of dedicated councillors and professionals to help us achieve our collective goals that will benefit all of us. I have no hesitation in recommending Ian for the important position of town mayor in the inaugural year of this new administration. Thank you.
Happy Town Mayor. Distinguished guests, fellow councillors, officers, and members of the public. It gives me immense pleasure to second councillor MacIntyre's nomination for Mayor of the town. As you already heard from councillor Madison, his career skills and expertise are considerable, and so valuable to our new town council. His social skills are appreciable too, being a good listener, a team worker, as well as a natural leader and mentor. He's also a family man with core values of integrity, honesty, and openness in his daily life. And these values are the foundation of this new town council. I again have no hesitation in seconding councillor Merchant for Mayor, although he and his wife Judith would be popular and hard-working ambassadors for our town. Thank you.
Any nominations? I therefore declare that councillor Merchant be appointed as town mayor for the ensuing year. I, Ian Merchant, having been elected for the office of town mayor, hereby declare that I take that office upon myself, and will duly and faithfully fulfill the duties of it according to the best of my judgment and ability. I undertake to observe the code of conduct which is expected of members of Spennymore Town Council. Thank you. Please proceed. We, Town Mayor, fellow councillors, officers, and members of our public. 2017 has been an interesting year so far. I am standing here today to do the supportive push from a few friends and my wife to stand for election, through a strong vote from the residents of Tullow 12 days ago, and at the request of our team on the council. It is an honour, a privilege, and a responsibility to accept the role of mayor. What persuaded me was the support of teamwork within our group. After only one week, I've been impressed by another professional team working in the town hall led by the town club. I will do my very best to represent all of the people in Spennymore, Tullow, Gerd Larrington, Middlesbrough, and Bysden. The mayor's role within the council is as the apolitical chairman of the town council meetings. The mayor's other responsibility is to champion Spennymore, engaging with local people and communities. As all councillors said in the election, working with all to make Spennymore a place to live. Public events provide the mayor with opportunities to raise funds for charity. With support from my colleagues, I have chosen two charities to help. As has been said earlier, I volunteer for the Prince's Trust, helping young people 18 to 30 into employment, education, training, and volunteering. The third charity targets those even younger, and is the first by its name, Scouts. It's actually based in St Andrew, Spennymore. The team now work with youngsters aged six and up as they progress from beaver to cub to scallywag. Volunteers help promote life skills as well as having fun. It's a great cause, and we are lucky, I think, to have Ian Johnson with us tonight. Many thanks to you, Ian, and to your team for all that you do for Spennymore's oceans. Thank you. The second charity is based here in the town hall. It is a tribute to our heritage and to the cherished memories of loved ones of many of Spennymore's residents. It has been supported by current and past council members on all sides of the chamber. It is the mining museum, and one of the treasure museums. And well done to Andrew, Mike, Jack, who is here tonight, and the team of volunteers. For those who have not been to the mining museum, it's a must. As well as photos, books, maps, working models, rocks, coal, tools, and a team of stories that can make you smile, and can even make you cry. And they are a model of a drift. Please go and experience the museum, and experience in a small way what it must have been like working deep under the ground, crawling in old seams two feet high, deep under the sea in some pits, in the dark. I look forward to doing all that I can to support these great causes and their teams for the benefit of all of the residents of Spennymore. Thank you. Before continuing with the agenda, I'd like last to retire and mayor to come forward and receive this gift of appreciation for all the work he has done during his term of office, which I am sure we will all agree has been an excellent year. I would now like to invite nominations to the position of Deputy Town Mayor for the ensuing year.
Distinguished members, guests, fellow councillors and officers. Thank you for attending this evening to see the inauguration of our new town mayor and deputy mayor, an important event in the calendar year of our town council. I would like to nominate councillor Plough Madison for the position of Deputy Mayor for the ensuing year. I have not applied for some years when we worked together as previous members of the town council during the six years of term, six years' term of office between May 2007 and May 2013. Clive believes family and friendship is important. He's an extremely personable and team builder. He is a strong believer that a cup is half-full rather than half-empty. He will be an asset to the council to help and work alongside our town mayor and his mayoralty office, and to represent the position of the mayor on occasions when a standing representative of all the council is required. Clive has many personal attributes. He is a man of ideas and creativity, bringing these to the forefront of his last term of office in the council. He has worked with young people as an athletics coach, helping them to aspire to achieving their personal goals, and used his professional and management skills to assist and guide our new team of councillors. I have no hesitation in recommending Plough for the position of Deputy Town Mayor. A position I feel sure he will enjoy and provide a valuable link of council with community.
Town Mayor, distinguished guests, members of the military, councillors, members of the public. May I echo the thoughts of councillor Wood? In thanking every one of you for being here this evening. Councillor Wood has put forward those qualities and community values that are essential to play the supporting role to the town mayor. Clive has a longstanding and is valued and respected member of our community. A team player who has those values that make him approachable and likeable. His knowledge and experience will be a great asset not only to the town mayor, but also to the council and to the whole community of Spennymore. It is with absolute confidence in Clive Madison that I second the nomination for the position of Deputy Town Mayor. Thank you very much.
Are there any nominations? I therefore declare that councillor Clive Madison be appointed as Deputy Mayor for the ensuing year. Can I now present Florence to councillor Madison? Another councillor, Madison.
Town Mayor, distinguished guests, fellow councillors, officers, members of the public. I take great pride in representing Spennymore as Deputy Mayor. I pay tribute to my wife Liz, who for 14 years has always spoken for what she believes in and the driving force for change. This is a new beginning with the new councillor. This is a new beginning with the new councillor, with some councillors here for the first time and some with many years of experience. I look forward to working alongside our new Mayor Ian and my colleagues in what will be a challenging though extremely rewarding year. I look on the wall of photographs of past mayors and see that the first four mayors were independents and then forty years of Labour councillors, some of whom I consider my friends and some friends whom are no longer with us. We have big seats to fill and we will not let you down. Thank you.
We will now continue with the agenda as presented. Are there any apologies perhaps? I look forward on the agenda is to elect the leader and deputy leader of the council for the ensuing year. Can I invite nominations for the position of leader of the council?
Chair, I wish to move a motion to be annamed and recorded vote that the positions of leader and deputy leader of Spennymo Town Council be removed from the council constitution and standing orders and replaced with spokesperson of the majority group. These positions have been in the past non-executive roles that have no authority over or above any other councillor and are so moved.
Town Mayor, I would like to second that motion. I recommend the proposal by the majority group to remove the role of leader of the council. This role is not established within this authority and in my opinion is an intrinsic part of how the council operates in both the current policies and procedures of the council and indeed those which have been proposed by the Town Clerk production tonight as part of the council's constitution. The arguments which were learned from the Spennymo independence in the past against this role centre around their opinion of power held by individuals a view which we do not share in any case. Both by their own logic, there is no merit anyway in replacing the position of leader of the council with an informal spokesperson for the majority group if that person is to carry on conducting the same role of that of leader. This is without considering whether or not it is right and proper to have such an informal spokesperson carry out those tasks which include employment relations without almost a senior officer. It costs nothing to have this role on the establishment of the council and not only is the non-executive position of leader documented in standard order twenty-six, but it is also referenced in the contract of employment of the Town Clerk. Removal of this position tonight with no formal review of the repercussions leaves the council wide open to contractual challenge and therefore we cannot support this motion. Because of this, we would urge the majority group to reconsider, elect a leader and deputy leader from their ranks and later review the role if necessary in a follow-up and structured manner, ensuring that all references to the role throughout the council's documentation are strategically addressed.
Chair, I would like to take this to a vote now.
Can we now vote on the motion presented please? All those in favour, please raise your hands. You need to keep them raised because we have a recording for it. So while we're doing this, I'll take the opportunity just to remind everyone in the chamber that refreshments are available for everyone at the end of the council meeting by exiting to the door at the back and turning right and walking towards the main hall. Our session? Item five, standing committees. Part A, we've decided that we will propose standing committees of the council for the ensuing year.
Chair, I wish to move a motion to be annamed and recorded vote that we accept the standing committees as presented until such time as there has been a full review of the format of these committees and to allow for amendment or otherwise upon which a resolution will be returned to full council for endorsement and approval.
I would like a second act motion.
As mentioned before the previous term of this council and certainly throughout my previous term as leader of the council, our group ensured that each of the council's subcommittees and working groups were politically balanced in such a way that not only were both majority and minority groups adequately represented based upon their seat chair within this chamber, but also that the minority group had a minimum of two members on each of these committees, allowing for motions to be moved and settled by the minority group and therefore recorded within the minutes of the meeting. This was democratically the right thing to do to ensure that all councillors, no matter what their party, were able to participate in the business of the council. Now, I would first thank the new majority group for returning that position on the vast majority of the council's subcommittees and working groups, and myself and my colleagues look forward to working hard for the paper of Spennymo within each of these groups. However, I do have an issue with the majority group's proposed composition of the HR support panel. For members' information, this committee was previously named the performance development committee and before that the Town Clerk appraisal panel, and as its previous names suggest, this committee has an important role to play within this organisation. It is this committee that sets and reviews the strategic targets of the Town Council and monitors the Town Clerk's progress towards these targets going forward. Now, in the past, this committee has always comprised of six members of the council and our group has always made sure that two of those members were from the minority group to allow them to be involved in what we believe is an extremely important area of governance of the country. So it was my surprise, Mr Mayor, in reading the list tonight, to find out that the new majority group have proposed to reduce this committee to only four members and to make all four board members from the majority group. As I mentioned earlier tonight, less than a quarter of all voters in the recent election vote for their candidates, so surely we should be afforded the opportunity to represent these people on all committees in the council, including this one. As the deputy mayor has said tonight already, we should all be working together and to be done as a whole. Mr Mayor, for the good of democracy, I would therefore move a recorded vote amendment in motion, which is as follows: that the schedule of nominations is accepted, but that the HR support panel is retained in a membership of six members of the council and the councillors A and G and A and F, to be added to the list of nominations for this committee. Now, I urge our members to support this amendment, which allows us all to work together for the good of this town regardless of party colours. This is exactly what some members of the Spennymo independence have already told me as their board, so I would urge you to follow through on those words by supporting this amendment for the good of democracy on Spennymo Town Council. Thank you.
Mr Mayor, congratulations on your appointment. I would like to inform the proposal, uh, leave behind my colleague.
Mr Mayor, I cannot support the amendment, and the reason I cannot support the amendment is I believe members of staff need to have a point of contact. They need to know that they can pick up the phone, they can whistle and blow, they can do whatever they need to do with a set number of people and that those people will work together and will not oppose each other in any way, shape or form to work for the benefit of all staff, and I urge my fellow councillors here to oppose this amendment and to vote against it. Thank you very much.
Can we take the vote on the amendment? All those in favour? All those abstaining? So now we turn to the original motion, as proposed by councillor Madison. Can all those in favour, please raise their hands? Can all those abstaining? Can all those against, please raise your hands? Thank you. It has been moved and seconded. Can I ask all members to accept the standing committees presented until such time as a review is taken place? We now move on to item five, part B, which is to confirm that the terms of reference listed committee as outlined in part one twelve.
Chair, I wish to move a motion to be annamed and recorded vote that we accept the terms of reference as presented until such time as there has been a full review of the format of these committees and to allow for amendment or otherwise upon which a resolution will be returned to full council for endorsement and approval. Thank you.
Chair, I'll second that.
Thank you. Our group will also do accept and approve the terms of reference for most of the committees as outlined except the here removals of support panel, which we vote against.
Chair, would I just ask if councillor Galad making a motion on that one or just accepting what we said? We've already voted against the HR committee.
Mr Mayor, the item five, please, to confirm the terms of reference now to the committees. I understand that I'm wrong, Mr Mayor, so I'm indicating that I would vote in favour on rock, a pack of the one which I have to vote against.
Chair, can we move on of the order that we actually vote on all issue?
Mr Mayor, I would like a name of recorded votes on item five, the, um, six, sorry, seven, please.
If for those in the audience who can be, it are resources of all. All those abstaining? It is being moved and seconded to accept the terms of reference in their current format until such time as further reviewed taking place. Items five C to five N, members have been circulated with the list of nominations received prior to the meeting. With members indulgence, I intend to take these items together.
I would just like to point out that ten, there was an error, and this should say, and this is to move that we create a festival of working party, not to appoint members at this time.
Chair, I would just like to ask that we accept the motion to appoint members to committees in accordance with five C to ten, and the ten, the festival of working party comes back to council a little later. Thank you.
Mr Mayor, I'll second that.
Mr Mayor, once again, something to be fair, David, we are against the removal of support panel, so that's been voted on that.
Can I take a vote if the motion is presented? All those abstaining? Item six is to appoint representatives to outside bodies.
Chair, I wish to move a motion to appoint members to outside bodies, with the exception of those committees listed as management committees, association and town council or buildings, where further information on constitution, financial data and terms of reference of these outside bodies are awaited before appointments are made. A decision on membership or otherwise onto those committees will be returned to the next appropriate meeting, yet to be determined, and then the recorded vote is requested. I'll second that.
Mr Mayor, I want to point, uh, my point of information, against the Spennymo community association, you've got one representative there which is correct, you're listed two members. This is a separate constitution organisation, constitution not in the hands of Spennymo Town Council, it's a properly ordained organisation, it's really to them, and we represent, we accept and constitute their constitution to the law.
And for information, I would like to the association requesting to membership, in
Can I now move the group on the vote on the motion? Cycle of meetings. Item seven on the agenda is to approve the cycle of meetings for the ensuing year. Members have been previously circulated with a proposed schedule.
Chair, I wish to move a motion that the cycle of meetings be approved until such time as a further review has taken place, upon which an amended schedule would be submitted. This motion is to also indicate that the month of August, we have recommended that there are no meetings. Thank you. I'd like to second that, Chair.
It has been moved and seconded, the cycle of meetings be approved in its current form, all those meetings deleted. Can I ask members to agree? Or members have agreed? Check signatories. Item M is to appoint check, check signatories, and item A is to appoint signatories for the council's general account.
Chair, I wish to move a motion that the signatories for checks be as printed on the schedule of nominations as previously circulated. Thank you.
Mayor, can I second that motion?
It's being moved and seconded for the signatories for the checks be as printed on the circulate schedule. All members agree. Item AP is to appoint trustees for the Mayor's charity appeal.
Chair, I would move that the trustees be as printed on the schedule of nominations as previously circulated.
Mr Mayor, I agree that the people nominated are people who are best suited to the job and I second that nomination.
It is being moved and seconded, the checks be as printed on the circulate schedule. Item nine, and the last item will be here. Item nine, council constitution, members are requested to approve the council constitution as recommended by the constitutional working group, which includes the council's standing orders, financial regulations and scheme of delegation. financial regulations and scheme of delegation.
Chair, I wish to present a motion to be a named and recorded vote that the constitution as presented is accepted except for the deletion of all reference to leader of the council and substitution of spokesperson of the majority group until such time as a full review of the constitution has taken place and to allow for amendments or otherwise upon which a resolution will be returned to full council for endorsement and approval.
Mr Mayor, I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. My thanks to the town clerk and senior management team for their extremely hard work preparing this first ever qualified constitution of the town council. Members of the public may not realise that it has been quite a tour of work at the council. It was quite a short period of time and I think it's quite an achievement that our offices have undertaken. It was a momentous task to gather seventy-six policies from all areas of the council's office and that includes forty-one brand-new policies which were included in this draft constitution for the members tonight. It was a priority of the last council to get this sorted out with the key angle of our last division statement. And adopting this constitution today will ensure that there's a strong framework for success going forward. I'm delighted that my group support this proposal. Thank you.
Can I now move that the vote be on second? Can all in favour, please raise their hand?